Okay, we're ready to go.
Like we're there.
Are we missing council member?
All right. All right. Thank you, public. We're a little behind here because we just coming off of a work session, so bear with us. I'm calling this meeting to order. This is the regular session of the mayor and council, city of Bisbee, county of Cochise, state of Arizona. It's being held on Tuesday, March 16th at 7:00 PM by Zoom. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Louis Pollak.
Here.
Councilmember Joni Giacamino.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Davis.
Here.
Mayor Ken Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Councilmember Joan Hanson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Anna Klein. City staff Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Carrie Bagley, finance director, Joel Landers, personnel director, Jesus Haro, public works director, Alberti Chave, police chief, George Castillo, fire chief, Joe Sebastian, city attorney.
Thank you, Ashley. For tonight's moment of silence, I have a very hard announcement. Do why our city manager is not with us tonight. Ms. Coleman. She lost her husband Blake a few days ago from a very sudden and unexpected brain aneurysm. We as a city are a family. And we mourn as a family from our employees to we on the council and to our residents. With deepest sympathy, I would ask that we all take this moment of silence through your thoughts and prayers to send our condolences, Teresa, and her family for their loss. Take a moment, please. Thank you. Thank you so much. It's gonna be an unusual meeting tonight without our city manager with us, so bear with us. We will get through this and we will make this work. So, thank you. Thank you, everybody. So, part of my proclamation tonight is I really don't have a proclamation, but I do have an announcement and a very unusual announcement. I don't think I've ever, I don't remember in all my seven years here, I ever had a 40-year veteran have a longevity award. So Julie's there. I can see her. And so I'm gonna turn this over, one to her boss, the chief of Chave, and of course, our personnel director, Jolene. And give a little accolades to somebody that's given almost a good part of four centuries, four 10-year periods. It bothers my mind. I did 28 years and thought it was a lifetime. So anyway, go ahead, Albert.
Thank you, mayor and council, members of the public. It's my privilege to recognize Ms. Julie Delk for her 40 years of service to the city of Bisbee. Julie started with the finance department back in March of 1981. And she spent quite a bit of time there, but in 2003 transferred over to the police department, and she's been with us since. She retired with the police department, but stayed on as a part-time employee and has since returned back to full-time employment with the police department. And I don't know where we'd be without her. We'd be lost without her. So I'm grateful that she's with us. And we hosted a very nice breakfast this morning with our staff here and presented her with a plaque from the police department for her 40 years of service. And I just want to say, on behalf of myself and the Bisbee Police Department, thank you, Julie, for your 40 years, and we look forward to many, many more.
Thank you.
Jolene, you have anything you would like to add? You're muted.
My music. I just want to thank everybody, everyone, the department heads, previous and future ones as well. Forty years has gone by so fast that it's crazy. It's crazy. I remember starting at 19 and here I am, 40 years later.
And you're always 39.
That's it. That's it. Actually, 25.
Oh, okay.
Why do we go back?
But thank you.
Ms. Landers, did you have something you wanted to add, I hope?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Budge and Mayor and Council for letting, thank you for letting me speak tonight. It's quite special to have gotten to know Julie, work with Julie, and now get to present a gift to her on behalf of the city of Bisbee. And then I have a little note from a citizen that I will read. And 40th anniversary is typically ruby, so this is a ruby.
Oh, wow.
And engraved on it has the city of Bisbee, Julie Delk, 40 years and her date. So I hope this brings you much joy and you know how much we all appreciate you.
Thank you. That's my birthstone as well, so thank you.
Double win. Okay.
Yes.
And now I have some words from Ms. Snooty. She said, "Please congratulate Ms. Julie on her 40 years with the city of Bisbee. I remember her in charge of our finance department and wearing old-fashioned costumes for Arizona's birthday and lots of other fun times. She has always been a great worker and loyal. I was so happy when the police department, when she joined the police department. We wish we could clone her and have that kind of loyalty with all the city departments. She is truly one of a kind, and it was a pleasure, it was and is a pleasure to work with her on all kinds of projects. She is always helpful when I call or have a problem, just like the old days. I'm sure I'm not the only resident that she is helpful with. Again, congratulations, Julie. Proud of you. You rock, girlfriend."
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Thank you, mayor and council.
You bet.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you, chief.
The only thing that bothers me is I can't personally hand that to you, but we'll get all through this and then at 41, we'll double shake them. But yeah, it's a monumental achievement. I just love having the secret number to go right to your desk and not anybody else's.
Thank you. Thank you. And if you guys need anything, I'm there too. So I'll be there another 40, so.
All right, I'm gonna hold you to that. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Have a great night.
You too.
So we'll move on to call the public. I think we have a letter, maybe? One? Go ahead. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Budge. We have one from Bonnie Williams regarding Old Bisbee Garbage Collection. "My name is Bonnie Williams at Bailey Hill. Although I see some benefits with the new collection methods, especially the control of illegal dumping, I am concerned about the pockets of homes that still have to haul the garbage a considerate distance to the new bins. This is the case for me where I have to lug it up 40 steps, then uphill a driveway for about 500 feet. Also concerned about elderly, myself included, and disabled persons' access, including a potential ADA violation. Please consider restoring door-to-door collection where it is still badly needed. Perhaps you can have people who are not satisfied with using the bins sign up for special service and evaluate their needs on a case-by-case way. If that can't be done until prison labor is available, we can deal with the kindness of volunteers or neighbors, but not on a forever basis. Thank you."
All right. Thank you. That's all we have, so that way we can move on to general business. And so do I have a motion for accounts payable, please?
I move that we pay payable in the amount of $209,508.2.
I second.
All right, we have a motion by Anna and a second by Joan to approve accounts payable. Questions? Do I see hands? All right, Anna, go ahead.
Just a couple. On page one, there are water reports for 125. What water reports?
Carrie?
Yeah. Those are the reports that we get from the water company that shows customers that have had service turned on and off and how much their usage is. I think the previous mayor and city manager got made an agreement with Arizona Water Company to provide those reports to us monthly. And they just, I think something happened where the person that was sending them, I'm not sure if they haven't been there, but we hadn't received them for three months. So we requested the past three months and they started billing again.
Thank you.
What are we using those for right now? I mean, as far as somebody getting their water shut off or usage, we're not using that as a billing or?
No, it just helps us. Like if somebody says, "Well, I hadn't been using any water. I'm not living there. Why am I being billed?" That kind of thing. We can kind of verify if they're actually living there, using the water, using the sewer services.
All righty. Any other? Oh, another one? Okay, go ahead, Anna.
I just got a couple more. On page two, there's a $70 bill for cleaning a city vehicle. What vehicle is it? And why don't we clean our own?
I can take that one. The city hall hasn't had a vehicle since before the fire. I think the fire that city hall did, or the vehicle city hall did have burned in the fire. We requested a vehicle since city hall employees have been using their own personal vehicles to do city business, go to the mail, get drop boxes, things like that on their own dime, basically. We asked if we could have a car, and the police department had one over at the impound lot that they brought over. It was a little dirty. There was like melted candy bar in the front seat, and you know, it was kind of gross, so we had somebody come and clean it.
I can attest to it. It had a bad smell, so we needed to, it needed to get cleaned.
I was just gonna add to that as well, if I could. In the past with inmate labor, we've had the ability to, when we pull those cars either out of the impound lot or the Rico lot, to have those things dealt with with inmate labor. And in this case, we don't have access to that anymore, so that was a challenge for sure.
Okay. Just one quick point I wanted to make on page eight under the airport. Is, do we receive a natural gas bill every month for their, it's $168 for natural gas. I mean, I have a much bigger house and I heat it for about 100 bucks a month. I just wondered, what are we doing for $168? And is that just for the residents out there? Does anyone know? Seems like an awful lot of gas for one month for such that small little apartment that's out there.
Yeah, we don't, none of the hangars have gas there. It only serves the building there. It would be their natural gas, so I can't, I can't tell you why it seems like it's a little bit more. I can look into that, though.
Maybe like the senior center, we can put a setback thermostat so when nobody's there, it goes back down. Anyway, just always looking for a little bit here and there. So I, anyway, okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, motion by saying aye. Oh, I'm sorry, Joan.
Point of order. It needs to be a roll call vote.
You're right. It's already early and I'm already making mistakes. Go ahead, Ashley. Roll call, please, for the counts payable. Thanks.
Councilmember Pollak.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. So moved. Moving on to item number two, approval of the consent agenda. We have just one item. It's the approval of the minutes of the regular session for March 2nd. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to the regular session of mayor and council held on March 2nd, 2021 at 7:00 PM.
We have a motion by Frank and I believe a second by Anna to approve the consent agenda. This one we can do with a roll call, right?
Councilmember Pollak.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein. Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. So moved. Onto old business. This will be item number three. It will be a move to approve, possible approval of ordinance O-2106 authorizing the acquisition of real property from Annie Robbins located at 76C OK Street. We discussed this at the last meeting. Do I have any discussion? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I move to approve ordinance 0, O-21-06 authorizing the acquisition of real property for Manny Robbins located at 76C OK Street.
Just a clarification, 75 OK Street is.
75 OK Street.
Sorry.
Great. I have a motion with a correction of 75 OK Street, C OK Street. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Joan, a second by Frank to accept the real property located at 75C OK Street. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pollak.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino. Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes 6-1. So moved. Moving on to another old business will be item number four. Item number four is discussion of possible approval of the quotes from Enterprise for leases for two Colorado pickup trucks. This was tabled from the last meeting. So I'll open it up for discussions, and I see Lou's. There you go. Go ahead, Lou.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we table this item. City manager can be present for this discussion and vote.
All right. Is there a second for that?
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second to table this once again. Is there any discussion to that? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote to lay this on the table. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Poes nay? Hearing none? So moved. This is laid on the table until our city manager returns. Bear with me a second. I zip down to item five. This will be a new business. This is under discussion of possible approval of the recommendation from the Bisbee Arts Commission to fund a grant application for the Friends of the Copper Queen Library in the amount of $500 from the Bisbee Arts Commission. I believe this, does this have, Leslie, is this yours?
Yes, it is.
You got it.
All right. So last week, the Bisbee Arts Commission voted to approve $500 go to the Friends of the Library. And they want to install a mural, an interior mural in the library, and the dimensions are eight by 13 feet. It's gonna go in an interior wall of the library where the Southwest Collection is right now. And it's going to be a photo mural with adhesive vinyl, and it's going to depict the three iterations of the library because the current building that the library is in is the third building that it's had. They're going to be working with local graphic artist Bridget Shanahan. And the, one of the Bisbee Arts Commission's main purposes is for art to be interactive with the community. And they're hoping that this mural will be interactive for library patrons. And so they're asking that we approve the $500 from the Art Commission Fund to help with the installation of this mural. And a lot has happened since the meeting, but that's what I remember. So if you guys have any questions, I will try to answer them.
Any questions? Seeing none. Leslie, I'll let you make the motion.
Okay. I move to approve the funding of the grant application for the Friends of the Copper Queen Library in the amount of $500 from the Bisbee Arts Commission Fund.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Leslie. I think the second was from Lou. Is that right?
Correct.
Thank you. To approve the $500 grant from the Bisbee Arts Commission to the Copper Queen Library. I think we do this, the voice vote. All those in favor, is that right, Leslie or Ashley? Okay, thank you. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Negative, say nay. Hearing none, chair determines. So moved. Approved. Moving on to item number six. This will be another grant application for $500 from the Bisbee Arts Commission. I'll let you go ahead, Leslie, and give a little synopsis on this one.
Okay, this grant application is from Yotaki Murray, and she's asking for $500 to make Irish story pockets. And these are little pockets, they're fabric pockets, and each one you tell a story by embroidering little buttons or, you know, we call them blog rows, things like that, onto, and each embroidered knot means a different thing, and each pocket tells a story. And we would be, the money is going to cover supplies, and she's going to lead a workshop on how to make the pockets. And you give them away as a keepsake, or you keep them, each donor decides what they're going to do with the pocket that they create. And that's it.
Okay, questions? All right, seeing none.
Okay.
There you go. Motion.
I move to approve the funding of the grant application for Yotaki Judy Murray in the amount of $500 from the Bisbee Arts Commission Fund.
I second.
Second it.
All right, we have a motion from Leslie and a second from Frank to approve funding of $500 from the Bisbee Arts Commission for Ms. Murray. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Nay? Hearing no, none? The ayes have it? So moved. Thank you all. Item number seven, discussion of possible approval of notice of intent to adopt ordinance O-21-08, amending the zoning code of the city of Bisbee, adding Article 10B, recreational marijuana establishment and testing facilities. I think we'll, let's see, would city attorney like to take this on, or who would, to explain it? Anyone? Joe, I mean, you kind of wrote it. It went before planning and zoning. Normally Teresa would tell us this, but go ahead.
Yes. This is just an intent to adopt the zoning code amendments that have already been before council multiple times with regard to the recreational marijuana laws that have gone into effect. And the city has seen a number of applicants seeking to find locations if they potentially are one of the few that are awarded a license. So it's important that we get these zoning code regulations established. And essentially, they pretty much mirror what the city already had in place for the medicinal marijuana regulations.
I have a require a special use permit, so questions or comments from anyone? Don't see any hands, so is there a motion to?
I move to approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance 02108, amending the zoning code of the city of Bisbee, adding Article 10B, recreational marijuana establishments and testing facilities, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for penalties.
I second.
All right, we have a motion by Frank and a second by Joni, and I'm not gonna read this big one, but basically to approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O-2108. Ms. Coronado, can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Pollak.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein. Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes 7-0. So moved. We'll touch base on this again in the next meeting. So we're moving on to item number eight. This will be a discussion of possible approval of a memorandum of understanding between the city of Bisbee and Arizona Water Company to hire and pay a consulting engineer to perform a study to improve fire suppression in the city.
I can speak to that, mayor.
You, but you got it. Thanks, Jesus.
So what this memo of, memorandum of understanding is, is we've already have a FEMA grant, and this will allow, or what this does is Arizona Water will be responsible to pay for 25% of that cost for the master plan. 75% of that cost will come from the grant. That will allows us to have this master plan done, completed a lot sooner, rather than, I know Arizona Water Company did have this in their future plans, but this will allow us to get this master plan completed sooner and hopefully allow us to upgrade our fire suppression system in Old Bisbee.
Much-needed situation. Any comments or questions? Go ahead, Joan.
I just had a question, well, it's a comment and a question. It's gonna be coming from the Naco wells. It's gonna be the potable water. Whereas before, it was coming from the old swimming hole reservoir, whatever you wanna call it now. It's gonna be very interesting to see what the demand is going to be on the wells. And is there any way to find out what the level of the wells, if there's been any differences? Or, and if there has been, how severe they've been? Because my main concern is using that much water, even though we don't, knock on wood, use it that much.
I'm confident that this master plan will address that.
It is going to address it, but it's, I guess it would address the levels too, okay.
Joan, I actually have the latest study that, because I sit on a lot of the water boards of the last, they monitor wells all around the entire area here.
Right.
And I have that report. I'd be glad to send that to you if you'd like to see.
Yes, I would.
Overall condition of the whole San Pedro basic water levels. Yeah, that came out just a couple of months ago or so. So I'll be glad, I'll dig that up. I know I have it somewhere, so. Any other questions? Right now, that our water is, of course, fed off of a well that's down at the well station just below the tunnel. I always worried that well may not produce at some point, and that would really be a catastrophe for us. So at least having that source from, a more reliable source, and also tanks will be a much relief. As far as I'm concerned, as an old firefighter, and also the ability to more than likely be able to draw from different sources if we have a fire. We only have one source now, and it's like one tube, and you can only. We only have one one source now, and it's like one tube, and you can only get so much out of one tube, so. Anyway, I think it's a great, great situation. I I noticed there's no cost on here, but I guess we won't know that until they find an engineering firm, they're going out for an RFP to to do that, is that right?
Yes, correct.
Okay, all right, great. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none. To, I'll make a, about my turn. I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Bisbee and Arizona Water Company to hire and pay a consulting engineer to perform a study to improve fire suppression in the city.
I second.
All right, we have a motion by the mayor and a second by Joan to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Arizona Water Company. I'll call for a roll call on this, just to be formal.
Councilmember Pollock.
Hi.
Councilmember Giacominio.
Hi.
Councilmember Davis.
Hi.
Councilmember Johns.
Hi.
Councilmember Hanson.
Hi.
Mayor Protem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. So moved. Moving on, this will be item number nine. This is a discussion of possible approval to purchase 100 universal carts or basically rollout trashcans. Again, back to you, Jesus.
Many members of the council. So yes, we are looking to purchase an additional 100 universal carts or rollout trashcans. We plan to use those for a replacement of broken rollout trashcans. Possible additional locations for Old Bisbee. I know that some somebody voiced a concern, and so we currently don't have enough so that we can even do that, so we can use those for that purpose. And and also, we don't have any for any new accounts, and so this will allow us to do that through the end of the year, I believe.
All right, comments or questions? Go ahead, Joan.
At the end of the fiscal year or the end of calendar year?
End of fiscal year.
Okay.
We can, we can use our budget for moving forward after that.
Okay.
Joanie.
These are for Old Bisbee, right?
They are for not only Old Bisbee, but for anywhere else where we have the rollout trashcans right now. We we currently don't have any replacements, and so we can use those as replacements or new accounts as well as Old Bisbee.
So if someone requested one, is that what they'd be used for also?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. I only ask to make sure you get the little things attached to wheels, so I mean. There was a snafu on the last bunch we got, we didn't get the all the parts, so. Oh, all right, Joanie, you got another one. Yep.
I have another question, and it pertains to, I guess, hopefully I can ask this, rollouts down the road. What happens if someone doesn't want it because they're too slight or too elderly, and they're relying on the big dumpsters, yeah?
Um, well, we have had that situation occur, and it with these, as we know, the dump, the dumpsters do create a problem with illegal dumping and dumping of of materials that we don't have, so we are trying to get away from that. I don't know if I have, I have an answer for you. If they say they don't want it, then we actually did have a resident say they didn't want it, come get it. And so we did. And so I believe they are taking their trashcan, their their garbage somewhere else.
All right, anything else? All right, seeing none. Okay, it's a simple motion, can I have a motion?
I move to approve the purchase of 100 universal carts from Toto.
Second.
All right, I have a motion from Joan, a second from Lou, to approve the purchase of 100 rollout dumpsters or trashcans, excuse me. Formal action, roll call, please.
Councilmember Pollock.
Hi.
Councilmember Giacominio.
Hi.
Councilmember Davis.
Hi.
Councilmember Johns.
Hi.
Councilmember Hanson.
Hi.
Mayor Protem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. So moved. All right, moving on to item number 10. This is of approval. Discussion of possible approval to purchase asphalt from K E and G in the amount not to exceed $215,000. You're on the seat again, Jesus.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, it is, it's our paving time now, with temperatures are finally getting into the the area where we can pave. We do have our first phase of the spring paving that that amount is estimated to going to cost at I say estimate because a lot of these roads, the when we have segments of roads, the widths aren't exactly the same, the entire length of the segment, and so it's very difficult for us to get an exact amount. This is why I've also asked for a 20% contingency, so we're going over, so to up to 215,000 for that first phase. Again, K E and G is, has cooperatively cooperatively and competitively bid, so they are on cooperative contract. I guess with that, if I'll answer any questions you'll have.
Lou, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Harold, where does the money come from? What account does it come from?
It does come from our 1% sales tax for streets and infrastructure.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I believe K and G is the only asphalt provider in Cochise County, or is that right, or?
City of Douglas does, can provide small amounts, but not not the amounts that we need.
Okay. We don't want to haul it from Tucson. Yeah, okay, any other comments, questions? Motion.
I move to approve the purchase of asphalt from K E and G in an amount not to exceed $215,000.
I second that.
I have a motion from Lou and a second from Frank to approve purchase of asphalt from K and G not to exceed 215,000. Roll call for formal action, please.
Councilmember Pollock.
Hi.
Councilmember Giacominio.
Hi.
Councilmember Davis.
Hi.
Councilmember Johns.
Hi.
Councilmember Hanson.
Hi.
Mayor Protem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. So moved. Moving on to item 11, the next purchase. This will be discussion of possible approval to purchase fog seal from Western Emulsions in the amount of Go ahead, mister.
Sure, again, this is an effort to do our pavement preservation. We will be fog sealing, the reason this is a little bit different than from the asphalt is the delivery method. On the the Western Emulsions will bring a tanker full, and so this is the exact amount for one tanker with deliver with the delivery cost, taxes, everything. What we will do then is we will take our fog seal machine and we will fog seal as much as we can with the one tanker. And when we're done with that, then we can prepare for the next phase and do some more if if their funding is available. I guess this this will be funded again with our 1% streets and infrastructure sales tax.
Quickly, does does our truck hold a whole tanker full, or you'll be filling it up several times? They leave the tanker for us or something?
Well, no, they leave it, they'll they'll bring a tanker. They'll fill us up, and we anticipate that we'll get two fill-ups with one tanker.
Okay, I wondered how much, I didn't think our truck was big enough to hold the whole tank.
And they and they will wait, they will wait until we're done with the first application, they fill us up again, and then they they leave.
All right.
And that pricing is reflected.
All right, just any other questions? Comments? All right, motion. Appreciate it.
I move to approve the purchase of fog seal from Western Emulsions Incorporated.
I second.
All right, we have a motion for Frank and a second from Joan to move to purchase fog seal from Western Emulsions. And at a cost of $11,109.94 as listed here. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pollock.
Hi.
Councilmember Giacominio.
Hi.
Councilmember Davis.
Hi.
Councilmember Johns.
Hi.
Councilmember Hanson.
Hi.
Mayor Protem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. So moved. Item number 12, this is a discussion of possible approval of an O-10 ordinance O-2109 Bisbee Workforce Housing Initiative. Without our city manager here, I don't know if anybody would want to take this. I'm okay, Joe, if you would, I I'd be inclined to put it on the table until she came back unless unless you feel good about handling it.
Yeah, I'd like to to be able to go ahead and discuss it and handle it if we can, just because we do have a an interested party in one of the city's workforce housing projects and trying to make sure that things aren't too delayed and in trying to to move forward. What what this ordinance does is it it codifies and establishes the, you know, the the code requirement for for what is the workforce housing initiative? Who qualifies for it, the objectives of it, eligibility? We also need something that establishes what what our anticipated proposed pricing is going to be for the workforce workforce housing, because you know it's one thing to say, okay, we're, you know, we're going to offer these these opportunities for 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 quality lower lower price housing, but how do we establish that? So this would establish it as it's no less than 80% of the current value. And when we would go with current value, would go by either a either an appraisal or a a a market a realtor market estimate, which is what you typically get when you go to sell your house. You would get a a broker's analysis as to the value of your house as to what to list it for. So this is what we we kind of need in place to be able to to move forward with the workforce housing that we have in place that we're trying to, we've got the one that's already complete, others that are in the process, and it's a, you know, it's a a city initiative that was started a while back, and this is just a means to try to to you know, set the the policies and the the procedures for for how we go go about disposing or or selling those those houses once we have them done and concluded.
All right, questions? Comments? Okay, seeing none.
I I would move to approve the notice of intent for ordinance 0-21-09 Bisbee Workforce Housing Initiative.
I second.
All right, we have a motion by Frank and a second by Joan. A little more discussion, just quickly, Joe, is there the eligibility? Is there a way that if no one of the first floor bid on it, that we broaden the scope for you know, another person? I I'm just wondering, how much are we locked into this that that if none of the of the people that we've we've targeted here apply or can and can approve, then how do we, what do we do with it? I don't see anything in this, that worries me a little bit.
Just at that point, what you would do is you would dispose of it, just like you would any other city property, you'd get the council approval to put it up for auction. You know, the intent of this was to establish a specific initiative for public safety, medical education in government employees. And if you don't have sufficient, you know, employees or applicants, then you either hold it or you can go to the to the auction process.
Okay, so we don't need to add that on here, we just go back to our normal codes that would allow that to happen.
Correct.
Joanie, there's, go ahead. Yep.
Okay, so did I hear you correctly when you said that it can't be sold for less than 80% of its value? Is that what you said?
So the property we will be sold to a qualified buyer at no less than 80% of the current value.
So my question is, why are we not starting at that? Because my understanding, maybe incorrectly, is that some people, you know, I mean, it being up in the higher echelon, it it makes it difficult for teachers, firemen, policemen. I know when I was a young teacher, even at at the, you know, 120, that's that was out of touch, you know, because you don't make a lot of money. So like, my question is, why aren't we starting it at the base?
Aren't you starting at 80% and going lower than 80%?
No, when they put it on the market. Or that's fine, too, I mean, but it just seemed that that one that went up the other day, they were saying was 120,000. And it was like, why did we start so high? That was my question. Do we have to start that high? Why aren't we starting at the low end? If we're actually providing it for workforce people?
You mean, when when the when the property is listed for sale?
Yeah.
Right, and I I think part of that was is we don't have this this codified yet as to how we go about establishing that that price, I think, moving forward, then yes. You know, we know, okay, we we've got a property that we have a broker's price opinion that says this property is worth $120,000, and that's what a a normal private person would would list the house for, then we'd say, okay, we'll reduce that by 80% and list it for that 80% reduction.
Reduce it by 20.
Or sorry, by 20%.
If we truly want to make this for our workforce and make it affordable, that's what we need to be doing, because setting it at market value, they are not in a house for that reason, because you cannot afford it. And again, I'm speaking as a as a teacher. I mean, even now, with 35 years under my belt, it would be difficult for me to qualify.
Would you, would you like to see the number less than 80%? And that would be, they have a five-year commitment that they would have to own it, or else they have to make that difference. But that's in here. So I'm just thinking maybe, but I would think it would start at, if it was $100,000 house, let's just say, because it's easy for me to figure out, then then we would sell it for 80, start it, but if there were more than two or three people after, like it said, it would be a lottery, and and it could go maybe for more, but lottery, though, you just pick, you're just picking a number out of the hat, so I guess the lucky one wins.
I just think we need to, if if we are truly doing this for workforce people, we need to make it as possible and affordable, as you know, as pos- as possible for them to succeed, I guess.
Right, and and using the current one as an example, I believe there is a buyer lined up at 99.9, and the property is, were estimated valued at 120. So you know, I'm not sure what the process was for, you know, listing it at the time it was was listed to to garner interest or whatever, for the first, for this first one. But this establishes what the the eligibility prices are, and then also the purchase price, so this this would allow us to have something in the code to say, okay, or the purchase price is is going to be no less than 80%, because you may run into a situation where the city acquires the house. The cost to rehab it and everything could cost the city 105,000 on a $120,000 house, you're not going to sell it for 80%, which would be less than what your cost into it would be. You'd then sell it for whatever your cost was, 85% or whatever that would be. That's why it says no less than 80% to the current value.
Go ahead, Joanie.
Isn't the materials and the work supposed to be donated, though? I mean, or are we actually having to pay for stuff?
Currently, but I think the 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 anticipated, from my discussions with Teresa, the anticipated goal is that this is going to be a self-funding initiative where the the money that's taken and sold, the profit that's made off of these houses are going to be rolled over into other houses to acquire those, to rehab those. So the goal is that it's going to be a self-funding initiative. So you're you're still, you're not, you know, you're not selling or not giving away the the property, you're giving it at a a discount for these specific individuals. You're giving it at a, a discount for these specific individuals who are of interest to be retained in the city. So yeah, that's, that's what the goal is. So there could be a circumstance where in the future, yeah, right now, the, 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 the supplies and everything have been donated. But looking forward to the future, if that's not the case, and the city is, is, is funding the, the rehab of the property, you still need to be able to recover what your costs are into the basis of the house.
Frank, go ahead.
I just wanted to add that step up Bisbee Nanako is doing the rehab in conjunction with the city. And, you know, we have volunteers that work on those houses, but we also have to buy the material. So we need to make enough back to roll over to the next one. That's why it's, we have the 80%.
Joni. You're muted.
One more question. You had said that you had a buyer for 99. I was under the understanding that it was firm at 120, as were other people. So is there going to be a clarification in the future so people know that they can bid low? Because that, that was not my understanding. And then now that you just said that, that that one, you know, that there was a bid of 99, it's like, whoa, I didn't know they could even do that.
I don't think that one was set up for bidding, as, as you said, that was, there were individuals that had submitted their interest form, but there were, there was only one individual that was able to go through the entire process of doing the education program, having the actual credit approval from a mortgage company to be able to be qualified for that property.
That's where this would help, I'm sure, clarify things. That's a, that's, that's good. Yeah, I, the way I see it is we don't, we can't lose money on these or it won't last for very long. You have to break even or at least make a little so that it will roll over. So hopefully at 80% we can do that.
And these are the, the initial program outlines and things. That's not to say that as we go through this process, because it's new, certain things can change in the future and we can go back and we can tweak and amend the, you know, this code section to, to suit how this works best for the city and for the applicants.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the table to approve ordinance, I'm sorry, not approve, but notice of intent to approve ordinance O dash 21 dash 09, the workforce housing initiative. Without any other hands, I'll call for a vote, roll the call, please.
Councilmember Pollock.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion approved, seven zero, so moved. So item number 13 will be, I need a motion to go into an executive session to discuss four matters listed here in the agenda. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
I move we go into executive session.
I'll second. Okay, motion by Leslie, second by Lou to adjourn into an executive, executive session. So at this point, we'll sign off and rejoin in a new meeting at that point. Thank you all.
It should be, there we go. Let's see, maybe. It says it's loading.
It usually pops up, there we go.
There we go.
All right, we're, we are back from executive session. Do I have a motion to come out of executive session?
I make a motion to come out. Go ahead, Joe.
I move to come out of executive session.
Frank? Okay, we have a motion and a second to come out of executive session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, nay, so moved. Back into regular session. We have one more item on the agenda, that's item 14. After our discussions in the executive session, I'll make a motion that, that we instruct our city attorney to continue with the negotiations for the Hillcrest Apartments, trying to acquire the deed of trust.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to, to instruct our attorney to continue negotiations to acquire the deed of trust for the Hillcrest Apartments. Motion by me, second by Lou. I just think we need a voice vote on this one.
Councilmember Pollock.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye, motion passes seven zero, so moved. This comes to the end of our agenda, city managers report, of course, we'll wait. There is a, she did post here an executive order from Governor Ducey for what's changed as far as state and the executive orders. I'd let everybody be sure they read that and understand what's happening there. Go ahead, Joe.
Just so, you know, so I can help kind of clarify, there's been some questions been going around the state with regard to the governor's order and how does that impact, you know, the, the gatherings of 50 or more and different things like that. So essentially, this, this executive order, essentially, it, it removes the capacity limits that were placed on businesses and pretty much opens up spring training for, for the valley. It doesn't, it doesn't change or impact the, the requirements for gatherings of 50 or more than 50 individuals. So individuals and, and groups still need to comply with the, the requirements for the submissions of the applications and things for that until we get some further orders from, from the governor as, as things continue. And then, of course, the city has its own mask mandate that's in place that, you know, will be, you know, that's up to, you know, the mayor moving forward and determining when to, to address that as things get better.
And still to use the CDC guidelines and distancing still in place, right?
Yes, yeah, it's still, still requires, there's still, the businesses are to assist in the efforts to contain the spread and businesses are to, you know, comply with and implement and follow the, the CDC and US Department of Labor and the ADHS guidelines to mitigate the spread. So there's still certain things that businesses have to comply with. But it does remove the capacity limits that were implemented in Executive Board 47. And it does allow for, specifically allow for spring training in major league sports to operate.
Alrighty, appreciate everybody's patience tonight. It was a bit of a long one, but I think we got some things accomplished and, and I appreciate the good discussion. And because it's going to take more of this, I'm sure, but, but we will, we will make it happen. So, and I'll, I'll move the city onward. A motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn from Frank, a second from Leslie. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Pose, nay, so moved. May be as adjourned, thank you all.
Have a great evening, everybody.
Great weeknight, guys.
Goodnight.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.